Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item of business is the yearly reorganization, so for that, I'll turn it over to Vince.
Well, we should do the, Marty should do the oath of office for Councilman Chase, Mr. Mettler, Mr. Onyaka, Bob La Court, and Victor Stevens. So you should all stand up and our attorney will administer the oath of office.
I think you all have your oath of office in front of you, so just follow with me. Just raise your right hand. I repeat your name.
I am Robert Mettler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same, and to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of Planning Board's class four member.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
If you all could just sign that and then pass it down to me, I'll do the notary on it.
The next matter on the agenda is reorganization. Do we have a nomination for Chairperson?
I nominate Michael Orsini.
I'll second.
Do we have any other nominations?
Move that the nominations be closed.
Do we have a second on that?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We vote, we'll now vote on the nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can we have a nomination for the selection of Vice Chairperson, please?
Seal, please.
Second.
Move to close the nominations.
Support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll vote on the nomination for seal for Vice Chairman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next matter, oh, Mr. Chairman, you can now do the next matter since you are now elected Chairperson.
Well, thank you, everyone, and seal. Good to be back for another year. Appointment of Planning Board Attorney.
Yeah, we have to, we do a fair and open process. We go out for proposal. We received one response to the RFQ, RFP. Our process requires that we do a formal interview process, so if anyone has any questions of the one respondent, which is Marty Murphy, you can ask him now. If not, you can accept the nomination to appoint our Board Attorney for this, for this year.
Okay, do we just make a motion to approve?
You can do that.
Okay. I make a motion to nominate Marty Murphy, representing Murphy McKean, PC, as our Planning Board Attorney.
Second.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, the next matter is Marty has got to swear in Mark and I for our yearly, so we make sure we don't tell the falsehoods down here.
Raise your right hand, gentlemen. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Swear I. All right, I'll do the, Councilman Chase doing the roll call. Mr. La Court?
Here.
Ms. MacGyver?
Here.
Mr. Mettler?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Alderman?
Yes.
Mr. Kobel?
Here.
Chairman Orsini?
Here. Okay, our next item of business is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from December 5th, 2012. If there are any corrections or comments, please let me know. If not, I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Alderman?
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Our next, our next item of business is resolution. The first thing is the calendar resolution for 2013, which is in your packet.
If there's no discussion, I'm moved to approve.
Second.
We'll just affirm that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, also in front of you tonight is we have to do a formal resolution appointing Marty Murphy as the attorney. That's in front of you. That's, that's just the paper.
Okay, yeah, and that, that resolution is also in, in your packet?
It wasn't in the packet. It's, it's, it's in front of you this evening.
So, if I, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution formally, accepting Marty Murphy and Murphy McKean, PC, as the Planning Board Attorney.
I second it.
You can do that by affirmation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the, the agenda is the Historic Commission recommendation to designate 106 Old Georgetown Road as a historic site. The Historic Preservation Ordinance requires that the Historic Commission hold a public hearing to recommend any sites or districts for inclusion as historic sites or districts. The Commission has recently done that. You have in front of you some of the information, the backup information for you to consider whether or not you want to make a recommendation to the Council for them to prepare an ordinance to designate this as a historic site. The property owner and/or the property's representatives are here tonight, and I would suggest that you do allow them to speak since they, they, they did travel, they have some info. The application for the, the site designation was prepared by Councilman Chase, so Councilman Chase, I would assume, would want to have a few minutes, a preface to, to explain to the Board the necessity and the reason for the nomination. He'd be the best person to do that.
Ted?
Well, just briefly to explain, this house that, I've been aware of the history since I came into town, because it's just up the street from me, and it's in the Elizabeth Menzies book on the Millstone Valley, where the external bake oven is cited as being one of the few excellent examples of such. The oldest part of the house was built about 1740, the newer part about 1790. And since, long before I came to town, it was in the, and it was built originally by Peter Berrien, who was actually the middle one of three Peter Berriens, and the brother of John Berrien, who was the owner of Rockingham. His widow rented it to General Washington. This house is known to have been there about on a map of 1741. It's been in the Stokes family since, I think, 1946. About a year ago, John Stokes died, and, two years ago, I think, and a young man who actually spent at least part of his youth in the neighborhood proposed to buy it, making payments to the, John Stokes's sister and brother, and work on it to, because no work had been done on it for a very long time, worked on it to redo the inside, and he really pretty much gutted the inside, and then found that he could no longer make the payments on the house, so it reverted to John Stokes's sister and brother. And his sister lives on Long Island. She came to the Historic Commission meeting, I think just Mr. Stokes is here. Anyway, the, the neighborhood is very concerned that this historic house might be simply torn down and a McMansion erected on the site, and rather than just wring my hands, I just took the bull by the horn, so to speak, and nominated it for, as a historic site. And actually, acceptance as a historic site would, does not absolutely prevent historic house being torn down, but there's a very long drawn-out process with multiple advertisements involved. I'm well aware that if we designate the house as historic, making it very difficult to tear it down, it will be, may make it somewhat more difficult to sell. I'm hoping that someone will step up and buy the house and do the necessary work, completely redoing the interior, putting the original chimney back up, doing the necessary repairs on the bake oven, which currently just has a piece of plastic over it. But I just felt that this is too important and well-documented a house to let it, to take any chances with it simply being destroyed. So I nominated it to the Historic Commission, and you have their memo on the subject before you.
Okay, so we can open this?
I would suggest you open it to any member of the public that wants to speak on the matter.
Yeah, we can do that.
Before you do that, though.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly not opposed to preserving the house. Does anybody know what the overall approximate cost to finish this project might be? Has anybody got an estimate? I'm thinking down the road, we've taken on a lot of historic sites with a lot of anticipation, and ultimately ended up being Franklin Township's total responsibility. I just wonder if there's some, if anybody knows the cost or what the long-term, is there some organization out there that's interested in it? Or do we know that yet? Was it too early?
Well, I, it's anticipated that somebody would buy it as a house to live in and put in.
Is it habitable, though? Or does it need to be repaired to be habitable?
It needs a lot of repair to be habitable. I mean, the bathroom was completely taken out.
Yeah, you said it was all.
The kitchen fixtures were completely taken out. Of course, they dated from 1946 or earlier, so you can quite see that someone would want to put in modern fixtures and so forth.
From your experience, Ted, is it as near as you can tell structurally, is it okay? It's all been gutted out, you said, on the inside.
On the inside, as.
Is that even, how the timbers and all that?
I'm, you know, I'm not a structural engineer, and I don't.
Oh, I just was curious.
It appears to be structurally okay.
Okay, not leaning sagging or anything?
It's not sagging or anything. As I say, the one chimney was taken down and just a tarp put over that point, but the bricks are still there that could be put back together.
Okay, I'm just curious, I just, you know.
Yeah, I, somebody said, I don't know where I heard this, that, well, it would take at least $200,000 to fix, to do what's needed inside. On the other hand, it's being, according to the real estate advertisement, they're just asking, I better not quote a figure because I'm suddenly wondering about it, but they can, can say, but a price that's really little more than the value of the lot. It's a 4.6 acre lot. On the other hand, it's right next to the notorious 90 Old Georgetown Road, which is not a plus.
Okay, got you. All right, thanks.
Okay, so with that, we can, we can even ask more questions later as we, we hear from anybody in the public, but let's just open this to the public. Make a motion to do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meetings now open to the public. All I ask you to do is use the microphone, your name and.
These over here to pass down.
Absolutely.
Just with those that pass down, these are photographs of the current interior home.
What, what we'll need is your, your name and your address.
You need to flip that, flip that mic down.
No, you don't need to be sworn in.
Switch right? Sure.
It's fine, you can.
Technology can see on me sometimes. I go to fascines, too.
There you go.
You guys had mine and Mike. Thank you all. My name is Frank Ho. The spelling of last name is H-O-H. I am a resident of Franklin Township. I reside at one Independence Court. I don't, may not look 55, but yeah. I'm also a Realtor with Caldwell Bank and Real Estate Firm in Hillsborough. I'm listing agent on this home. Dr. Chase is the master of understatement. This home requires a lot of work. $200,000 is a low ballpark to restore this home. It was, there was starting to be renovation done. A lot of items were removed from the home, including the lath, including the plaster down to the lath and heating system, and the, as mentioned before by Dr. Chase, the bathroom is now a pipe standing out of the ground, and the kitchen is not much better. The home is uninhabitable, therefore, no mortgage can be, can be done for this. It must be purchased cash. We have had many people look at it, and all have come in and said that it exceeds their ability to take the project on. I've heard from a lot, some of the neighbors around the area that said, geez, why won't someone come up and just take this house over and love it and put money in and, and repair it? And I've yet to have anybody from the area, other than people wanting to see the home, come in and make any offers or suggestions to me. Since, because I'm required by law to make disclosures, since the meeting of December, I've had to tell everybody who wanted to look at the house, the house is being considered as a historic site. I've had several people decline to see the home after that point in time. Franklin Township is relatively reasonable in its treatment of historic sites. Many towns, once a site is made historic, allow almost nothing to be done in or outside of the dwelling without approval of the Township, one of the committees. Franklin Township only really restricts the outside of the structure. Am I correct in that understanding?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. However, the perception of that outside of us right here is that once a site is, is, once a home is dead and historic, that you might as well just forget it. Nothing can be done. So that's, so I'm encouraging that the, this board here not to make this historic site because I am afraid that it will become unsellable at any price, and therefore, who knows what will happen in the future. But nothing good to either my client or the township. I passed down some photographs of the inside of the home. Dr. Chase has seen them already in various forms. Unfortunately, the home is not in good shape.
Can I ask a question? Why, why was it gutted in the first place?
This was before my time. Part of the process of gutting it would not be inconsistent with making a major renovation. And unfortunately, the person who decided, who proceeded with it, again, before my time, gutted it in preparation for restoration. Had he had sufficient funds to continue it, he might have been able to bring it to fruition. He did not, and as I mentioned before, not here at the previous meeting, why we're here is not as important as we are here. And we need to determine where, you know, where this home is going in the future. All right, do you have any questions of me at all?
What, I have a question for you. What's the, how many acres is with this land?
It's a little bit under five acres.
What's the value of the land, songs of house?
Difficult to say, Mr. Pettit, because there are considerable wetlands on that property.
Hmm, yeah, that doesn't necessarily make it invaluable. You have no idea what the value of the land is.
The value of the land, so what somebody's willing to pay, it's obviously under the asking price of 240, while someone, someone would have made an offer on it.
The asking price right now is 240?
$240,000, that's correct.
And that's for everything?
That's right.
As is, where it is.
That's for everything, as is.
So if somebody bought it, they'd get four and a half acres of land?
Four and a half.
Almost, almost five, but.
Almost five acres of land, and then it would, assuming it's not declared anything but what it is, demolish the house and build whatever they'd like to build?
That's.
Or try to subdivide it?
Well, they couldn't subdivide, it's five acres, it's five acres zoning over there.
Oh, I, you know, I have a zoning map here.
It would be difficult to subdivide.
All right, you answered that.
And, and the property, even though I'm not a wetlands engineer, the property has wetlands on it, which would preclude those areas from being built on.
Well, building on them is one thing. You can build a substantial house on five and a half acres, even with wetlands, if you wanted to have an estate.
Absolutely.
So it is, something can be done with it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But nothing, nothing really could be done with it, other than to either fix that house up or tear it down and build, as you say, either a similar or bigger size. But it's going to be a single-family residential.
Oh, right, right.
It's not going to be anything else.
I'm with you. Thank you, thank you.
We put it on the market back in September, and I, and I, we've, we've had a, a number of showings on it. I've had people, typically when I, what I do is, being professional, if someone calls me up to see a property, I ask them for proof of ability to pay. Because I, earlier in my career, I used to run everywhere for anybody. I do not now, so, and I've, a lot of people have just been able to provide that because, one, they believed it was, it was mortgagable, which it is not. Unfortunately, it's, you know, again, it's where it's at is where it's at, it's not, what happened, happened.
Any other questions? Can hear from more people if there are more people.
And right now, it is a challenge to sell at this point in time. It'll become more of a challenge to sell, if not impossible to sell, should be make it a historic site.
Okay, thank you.
My name is William Stokes. I am with my sister. I'm co-administrator of my brother's estate. The estate owns the house. We're in the process of trying to sell it, whereas, as is. The demolition or renovation that was started was under contract by an individual who had us sign legal forms that he was going to renovate the house and ultimately buy it from us and so forth. When he defaults it on the contract, he reverted back to us as owners to dispose of. So one reason it's all gutted was that he was in the process of starting his major renovations, including removing the chimney, et cetera. As to the 4.95 acres of land, right, that justifies one house, according to the latest zoning, it would be almost impossible to build more than one house because the land is in irregular shape, including the wetlands, and we'd be very difficult to divide into more than one property. Removing the old house would give you five acres. My sister and I are opposed to having this historic designation at this time because, again, we're trying to sell the house and get it off our hands, essentially, and we're watching the price and hoping someone will come by and buy the house and preserve it, as we would like to see. But we're open to any purchaser who wants to buy the land and the house and get it off our hands. So at this point, my sister and I are opposed to the historic designation at this time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this? Seeing, going once, twice. Seeing no one, I move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We can have some discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I think I need to recuse myself from this because I am Mr. Stokes' second cousin, and even though that's not like a super close relationship, there still is a relationship, so I, I think I will leave the table at this point in time for a while.
Fair enough. Thank you. Bob, other discussion from the, I mean, I, I have an opinion, but I want to hear from everyone else first.
Are there particular criteria that the Planning Board's supposed to be following in this?
Yeah, the, the memo that was sent out explains in, in detail, point by point, the criteria that the Historic Commission had to come and make a determination that it met to recommend the historic site designation. And what the Planning Board tonight is here to do is to decide whether or not the Planning Board should recommend to Council that they prepare an ordinance for adoption to designate it as a site based on the Historic Commission's public hearing and recommendation.
Is that recommendation even when it's at odds with the property owner?
That.
If the property owner doesn't want it, can Historic Commission just say, well, we're going to do it anyway?
They can't do anything. Alls they do is make a recommendation.
Even make a recommendation.
The, the.
Okay, I got the answer.
But no, 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 let me, let me explain it, because the, what, what, what the ordinance says is that if you have a historic district, if 51% or more of the properties in a historic district are against it, the Historic Commission cannot make the recommendation. In regard to a site, it's completely within the purview of the Historic Commission to recommend it or not recommend it, and for the Planning Board to take any action.
Regardless of who the owner is?
Yes. Now, you can surely take that in consideration in your deliberations and decide whether it's appropriate or inappropriate, but the requirement as per the ordinance.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. So, so here, here's my take on the matter, and maybe this will stimulate discussion and maybe it won't. So I, I mean, I have no doubt from the testimony of Dr. Chase that it qualifies as a historic site. The thing that bothers me about declaring it as such is that the, there can, there can be the hopeful outcome that somebody will indeed purchase it as is and fix it up, and maybe September is too soon to see whether that type of buyer can come forth. And I don't know how active a marketing for that buyer is. But the more likely, I'm afraid, outcome is that buyers will be afraid to do this because of the cost of the house as it is now. If it wasn't gutted, I think it's a totally different story. Because the outside is, you know, what's regulated by the ordinance, and at least somebody could live in the house, and if they didn't have all the money right away, they at least have what they've purchased to live in, and then they, you know, can do things piecemeal even. What I fear might happen in this case is just demolition by neglect. And, and that is one thing that gives me pause to, to make this historic. Maybe somebody will get lucky and come in and preserve most of it, but it, it places an awful burden on the estate as well, I think, and that's part of my consideration as well. So that's sort of the way I look at it. I think I would be leaning to, to not recommend it. But that's just me, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a lot of areas where I agree with you, and I, I just have a couple other questions about it. Has any, anyone reached out to any of the historical organizations within the township that might be interested in getting involved with this site? And is this site a potential open space acquisition where it could be turned over, let's say, to the Meadowlands and the partnerships that we've had with them before? I mean, I'm not even saying, I'm not even assuming that, that it's worth that, I'm just wondering if any of these avenues have been explored before we do one thing or another, either designate it or.
Well, I can, I can say that unfortunately, there isn't any outside state or federal funding to purchase sites like this. There's very, very limited. And while I will not speak for Council, I can tell you that the direction that we've been given is that Council is not inter-
been given is that council is not interested in purchasing or becoming the caretaker of any additional historic properties, and in fact, we're looking at removing ourselves from being involved in those properties to the great extent, because we're really not supposed to be landlords. So the answer to that is that, I don't, I don't know if they've done that, they probably haven't, but it probably isn't much of a chance of an outside historic agency or the township purchasing or the Meadows being able to have the funds to purchase the property.
I just thought I'd ask the question.
I have to admit, I haven't done anything of the sort, but there's been a certain amount of thought that as the original membership of the Meadows Foundation grows old, we only hope that they can continue to maintain and manage the properties that they are now managing. And as for the township, yeah, I think we have more properties than we know what to do with right now anyway.
Yeah, the Gunther, isn't it true that, what is it, the Gunther Stufus House, the one down on Middle Bush Road, is that what it's called? The one that was Town and Country? I mean, that sort of fell into our lap a couple of years ago, and I don't know what the status of that is, but I know that, you know, at least there's people, right, Barbara, it's taking up the cause. If there was something like that here, where at least there might be some hope that somebody can advocate for the house, the Meadows is overextended without a doubt, I would feel better that if somebody could step up. We could hope that would happen, we can try to, you know, facilitate that along with the owner if they want to, you know, have access or advertising to make people know that that could be, you know, a possibility. But, I mean, to put that burden on the property owner and with no likelihood of anybody necessarily is of right now coming forward, I really, I really hesitate to do that.
Well, I would not like to burden one family with this, with this project in light of what appears to be a different atmosphere on a part of the town and willingness to be involved in things like this, because it's, I don't think it's fair to the individual property owner.
Any other thoughts from either end of the dais?
I have a question, though. If it were granted a historic site, would it be precluded from incorporating it into a larger structure, or is that something that couldn't be done?
The, what's, if it was designated a historic site, what happens is, is that anything done to the outside is revealed by the Historic Commission for their recommendation, and that recommendation goes to, if it's a planning board application, the planning board, the zoning board, if it's a simple permit, then it goes to either myself or the construction official, Vince Lupo. Now, typically, unless it's completely unreasonable, that myself or the construction official would file the recommendation, just as the planning board does, lest they find it completely unreasonable, because that's their job. If they wanted to put an addition on or anything else, and then they did it in conformance with the Secretary of Interior's guidelines, the commission typically approves it. There's also a procedure for demolition, that either certain notice procedures or certain procedures that you have to file to do drawings and everything else, and after a period of time, you can demolish. So it doesn't prohibit them from demolishing or prohibit them from putting additions, it's just another level of review that they have to go through.
So, if someone wanted to buy that and draw plans, making it into a larger, grander structure that was historically in keeping with the times, that it would be possible, given the permits?
Did the Historic Commission review it and give their recommendations, and then the appropriate body or individuals would decide whether it was appropriate, correct?
So, as a realtor, I mean, that would be something that, you know, might be promoted.
Yeah, I think, yes, that's one of the, I think the con is, is that it's, it's a hard place to sell, and it makes it more difficult. On the other side, the historic designation provides a certain level of protection so that it makes sure that it stays in the manner that it should be, so that the township and historic nature is protected, so there's, you know, it's a balancing act.
Because we've all seen a lot of historic sites.
Eleven of you have to decide upon.
Where you have the original part of the structure, and then you have the added-on part of the structure, we've all seen this.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, there's another house just up the street that's been done that way very nicely. And one thing I would say is that a prospective buyer could come to the Historic Commission for an informal review and saying essentially, here's what I'd like to do, would you permit me to do it? I mean, just the other night, we had just the last meeting of the Historic Commission, there was an informal review of exactly that nature, and I think at this point, well, I'm only liaison to the Historic Commission, but I would certainly argue for almost any reasonable proposal in order to ensure saving the house. There was one person I know slightly who was passing by, and at that point indicated he wanted to make an offer on the house, but this apparently hasn't, but he asked about doing, putting an addition on, and I probably made a bit of a face, but I said out the back, because if you, you see from the street, the public face of the house remains the same, then, you know, something out the back is not objectionable. And I would certainly, myself, argue before the Historic Commission for anything of the sort, but that is, of course, all very hypothetical.
Right.
This, I suppose this fact that it's un-mortgagable and somebody has to come up with cash is probably a very large objection, you know, difficulty in selling the house, whether or not it has a historic designation on it. I find myself wishing that we had a procedure that we could, and possibly, if the board chose not to follow the recommendation of the Historic Commission, but the Historic Commission's recommendation remained on record so that if a buyer came forward who really did want to save the house and preserve it, we could then bring it up again if we had a buyer who did not object to that designation. But that, of course, you know, we thought we had such a buyer, I mean, we on the street thought there was such a buyer, and unfortunately, it didn't work out.
Okay, well, hopefully, I've given Mr. Ho food for thought, maybe it's a different way to present the house.
Get down that road, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciating it, if you have any buyers, please send them my way.
Hey, I guess one thing I'm unclear, maybe Ted, you know the answer, maybe Mr. Ho, you do too. Somebody had a contract with you, they gutted the house, they didn't have the money to finish what they said they were doing, they get away with that?
Could you just do me a favor, just speaking to the mic, I'm sorry, I just want to pick it up on the record.
Mr. Orsini, that was before my time as being involved with the house, so I can't answer.
Mr. Stokes?
No. Nor my attorney.
Mr. Stokes, no litigation? I mean, if somebody did that to something that I had in an estate, I'd be a little upset.
We had a legal contract with the individual, signed, sealed, delivered. He was under contract to work on the house, paying us so much a month, like rent, to speak, which covered our insurance and our taxes and so on, okay? With the intent that when he finished renovating the house, he would be in a position to buy us, buy it from us at the reasonable price that we were looking at at that time, okay? He was in the contract about three months, maybe four, I don't remember exactly. During that time is when he gutted the house, the walls, took down the chimney, plowed off the landscape to be able to work on the outside of the house and so on, okay? At that point, he said, I don't have any more money, I can't pay you the money each month, so he sort of walked away from the contract. So, of course, in the contract was the clause of default. He defaulted, the property comes back to us clean and clear, and we're now in the market of trying to sell it, okay? We haven't considered yet any legal action against his default, primarily because he has no money.
Yeah, he may be sensible.
If he suddenly gets wealthy, he'll hear from us.
His father built a big fancy house down the street, and the rumor in the neighborhood is that the father is in a poor financial position also.
I believe the phrase is, you can't get blood from a stone.
Let's, can we vote on this?
Yeah, so, what I'm going to do, rather than, so it can, it can still be, I agree with Dr. Chase, is it could still be part of a paper trail that, where the house gets sold and somebody goes to engineering or zoning or whatever to do plans, they can be shown this and said, well, this is an option, you know, but obviously, it's unenforceable, but it's an option so that maybe, maybe some of the house does get preserved. But I'm going to make a motion to approve the historic preservation recommendation, and if you agree with that motion, just vote yes, and if you don't, vote no, rather than...
And that, and remember that, if the recommendation is to recommend to council to pass an ordinance, to prepare an ordinance to designate it as a historic site, so what you're doing is, if you're voting yes, you're recommending that it be designated historic site by the council.
That is correct, so that'll be my motion.
Hold the board. Second motion.
Okay, let's vote.
Hold the board, let's vote.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
No.
Mr. Pettit?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Alderman? Mr. Cobble?
No.
Chairman Orsini?
No.
Chair, the motion fails.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Do you want your photos back?
Mr. Ho, sir?
Um, you can have it if you'd like, um, I can take it if you want. If you know who wants to buy this house, by all means, so.
You could paper up between the studs.
Well, you now, you now have your cause on public television for whatever that's worth.
I wish there were...
Half-hour free advertising.
I wish there was some sort of statewide publication for, to advertise houses like this, maybe under the auspices of Preservation New Jersey, so that one could attract a wider plan, too.
But it should be in the Historic Preservation Magazine.
Okay, we'll move on to our only hearing for tonight, PLN 12-00012, and after that hearing is over, I encourage you not to run for the exit since our planning board attorney has a five-to-10-minute work session item for us to consider.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linnis, my office is at 21 Clyde Road here in Somerset, New Jersey. I am absolutely pleased to represent Earl Carson tonight. Earl is the owner and applicant of the proposed subdivision. Earl, you want to stand up?
[inaudible]
Interesting story about Earl, this young fellow, at one point in time, was a member of the Board of Adjustment of this township, and this particular piece of property where he's lived at, he's been there since 1976, has been a resident of the township prior there, too. He even predated my tenure as Planning Board Attorney back in 70...
That's, that's not possible.
All right, in any event, this is an application to subdivide the property into four lots, we're looking for preliminary and final subdivision approval. Property's located on Pleasant Plains Road, it's known as Block 35, Lot 1.01, it's in our R20 zone. By virtue of the subdivision, all the lots will be conforming to all of the bulk standards in the zone, lot area, setback, front yard, rear yard, frontage. Technically, there would be three through lots, and we, and that will be the variances that we're looking for tonight. We'll also be looking for a waiver of curbs and sidewalks, both on Claremont and Pleasant Plains Road. Pleased also to inform you that this will be a truncated hearing because we can comply with, and will comply with, each and every item of all the professional reports. So I do have one witness, that's Dan Doran, Dan's our site engineer, and he'll testify as to the merits of the application.
Want to raise your right hand, Mr. Doran? Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I think you've testified before this board, before Mr. Doran.
Yes, I have.
Licensed to the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am, I'm licensed engineer, land-spare, and planning here in the state.
Okay, you're accepted.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, did you have a hand in the preparation of the subdivision plan that's before the board this evening?
Yes, I have.
All right, and do you want to describe the existing condition of the lot?
As Mr. Linnis said... As Mr. Linnis stated, this site is at the corner of Claremont Road and Pleasant Plains Road. It's 2.86 acres in size, and Claremont Road is a county road, Pleasant Plains Road is a township road. Pleasant Plains Road, all the existing utilities are located in Pleasant Plains, municipal water, sanitary sewer, gas and electric, are all located in Pleasant Plains Road, all servicing the existing site. There are no sidewalks or curbs out on Claremont Road existing today. There is a curb located on the north side of Pleasant Plains Road. And, you know what, everyone's looking at my exhibit, and we didn't, I'll say...
All right, Dan, you want to mark that, A1, and put a date on it and identify it for the board and the public?
What this is, it's an enlarged color version of the lot layout plan that was submitted with the application. It was page three of the subdivision application.
Could you angle that back a little bit more so the public can see it? Maybe shift, just shift the whole thing back. There you go. Thank you.
And maybe just so that, as we talk about the exhibit, you'll understand what's taking place. North is up the page, Claremont Road is at the top, Pleasant Plains Road runs along the bottom, this is the corner where Pleasant Plains Road comes out to Claremont, and then this is the entire site. Existing on the property today is one single-family residence that is serviced by municipal water and sanitary sewer. There is a number of freestanding sheds and a frame garage also located on the property. What we have highlighted in the dark green is the existing wooded area that will remain on the property. That's almost three-quarters of the property as it's being wooded. There is a regulatory wetlands boundary established on the property through the issuance of a letter of interpretation by NJDEP, and the wetlands and the associated transition areas are also highlighted in that dark green. The lighter green is an existing grass area that will remain. As Mr. Linnis has stated, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into four single-family lots, each of them having single-family dwellings located on each of the lots that we have, the dwellings are highlighted in the lighter brown, and then in the darker color is the driveways that will provide access to each of the lots out on the Pleasant Plains Road. Each of these lots will be serviced by water and sewer, and what we have, I'll say, left in the light or white line going through the property there, that is the extent of the transition area and the wetlands area, and everything to the north of that line will be in a conservation easement, so that this whole area, or the northerly half of the this whole area, or the northerly half of this site, will remain in its existing condition.
So basically, half the site, if this is approved, would be in a conservation easement area? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. The fact that that area will be protected through a conservation easement, there'll obviously be no access out to Clermont Road from either of the four proposed lots.
All right. How does that relate to the through-lot issue?
It's a big factor in it.
You're familiar with the through-lot ordinance in Franklin Township?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. And the ordinance in the municipal code is Section 112-17B. And I'll read you what the ordinance states with regards to through-lots. And what that means, the through-lot, just in case we're not familiar with that, is a lot, a lot that has frontage on two streets. This site has frontage on both Clermont and Pleasant Plains. But the through-lot shall be prohibited except where necessary to overcome specific disadvantages to shape, topography, or orientation, and when the vehicular access is permitted only on one street. And I feel that all of these lots meet those requirements. The only variance, as Mr. Linnis had stated, was the fact that proposed lots 1.03, 1.04, and 1.05 are considered through-lots. Proposed lot 1.02 is a corner lot. And these are, this variance is a C1 variance, where the shape of the existing lot and the topography of the existing lot all contribute to the hardship that has been created in permitting, or I'll say excluding, the ability of creating lots that would both have property on Clermont and on Pleasant Plains. The shape of the lot is shallow and long. The length, or the width of this lot is three times the depth. The depth is only 215 feet, where the length is approximately 730 feet. The topography, which is the, considering the wetlands that are on the northerly half of this site, prohibits us from being able to configure lots that would, basically, if we were able to cut this property in half and have a lot that would be fronting on Clermont, that would eliminate the need for the through-lots. The fact that the existing topography, that being the wetlands, is located there, that prohibits us from being able to configure lots that would front onto Clermont.
All right. Do you have an opinion from a site design engineer's standpoint as to whether, if the board grants the variance for the three lots, would it have a substantial detrimental impact to the public good?
Absolutely not. I think due to the fact that the applicant is looking to protect the wetlands with the conservation easement, the fact that there will be no access from either of these four lots out onto Clermont, there is no substantial detrimental impact to the zone plan, zone ordinance, or the public good. And I think it's also important to point out, people that are familiar with this site are familiar with this neighborhood in Franklin, there are an additional four lots that are through-lots also, that front on Pleasant Plains Road, and they have frontage on Clermont. The access out to Clermont is prohibited also, and the access to those lots is only from Pleasant Plains. So it's not something that is unusual in this portion of town.
All right. Dan, as a result of this application, if it's approved, the applicant is also going to dedicate additional right-of-way. Where's that located?
That's along the frontage of Pleasant Plains Road. There will be a 10-foot-wide strip of ground dedicated to the town for road widening purposes.
Okay. And you're familiar with C2 variance proof requirements?
Yes, I am.
So do you believe, based on your testimony and the project, do you believe that there's a net benefit whereby the zoning, it's a better zoning alternative outweighing any detriments?
Yes, absolutely. And the fact that there is no negative impact, it certainly meets those C2 requirements also.
Okay. And I have one question on Carl Houck's report. He always looks for copies of easements, exceptions, deviations in the course of your surveying and review of this matter in preparation of the plans. Are there any such...
No, there is not.
Okay. And just for the record, I indicated to the board in my opening statement that the applicant was agreeable to each and every item of each and every report that was furnished to us. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And I think I'd like to also bring out that the applicant has received approval from all outside agency approvals that are required for this project.
Okay. And you're supporting the request for a waiver based on your testimony, right?
That's correct. The waiver, there are two waivers. The first one is for the installation of curbing and sidewalk out on Clermont, and the applicant has received approval from Somerset County, Clermont being a county road, and there were no improvements required through that approval. The second waiver is regarding sidewalks being installed along Pleasant Plains Road. There are no existing sidewalks out there today, and on the north side of Pleasant Plains Road, there are no sidewalks, not until you get closer to Route 27.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Do the board have any questions for their Mr. Linnis, or...
About the sidewalk, it says on the review comments that there are sidewalks existing on portions of the opposite side of the street on Pleasant Plains Road.
True. That's correct. On the south side of Pleasant Plains Road, across from the site, there are sidewalks.
All right. The reason I'm asking, because I was at a meeting recently, the green team, it was attended by our township manager, Bob Bornlocker, and he expressed dissatisfaction with both the zoning board and the planning board, because we have been remiss in granting...
We don't permit you to build a house and have a driveway.
This sort of thing, with sidewalks and curbs not being built. And that's part of the reason that we have as much busing in the vicinity of schools that we presently have, the expense of the busing. And with the township developing, who knows where the next school is going to go in? I really feel that sidewalks do belong on our roads, and the times have changed. We need to accommodate our school system by starting at some point demanding sidewalks, particularly in the view of future development. That's how I feel.
Well, you have no control over the property on the other side of the road. This is true. However, you know, for the Clermont, you are making an in lieu contribution to the county.
That's correct.
So would you make an in lieu contribution to the township, so that ultimately they might complete sidewalks on the, because it doesn't really make any sense to me to put a brand-new sidewalk from scratch on the north side. But if there's sidewalks existing on the south side, any in lieu of contribution could be used to complete those in the future. You've already set a precedent in agreeing to a similar contribution to the county. For what? I actually don't know what the county would use it for, because they're not going to put in curbs and sidewalks. But you're paying them almost 20 grand to not have to do it, which we wouldn't want in any way, and I don't think they do either.
Well, that's a good solution.
Think about that. I don't know what that sum would be, though.
Does, do the sidewalks that are in the right-of-way of Pleasant Plains Road that are directly opposite this site, do those sidewalks provide the ability for children on the north side of Pleasant Plains Road to walk up and down Pleasant Plains Road and also to get on and off a bus? Those sidewalks are within the right-of-way of Pleasant Plains Road today?
Yeah, that's true. But I don't know that there'd be any contemplated widening of Pleasant Plains Road either, because there would need to be. But...
No, no, no. I'm not talking about the widening. The sidewalks are there. So does, that provides access for any potential student living in any one of these four homes to be able to traverse on Pleasant Plains Road, within a walkway.
It's to counter the issue that's future schools and schoolchildren.
Yeah. Is that available across the street, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, apparently not in a complete way.
No, it doesn't run from here to there.
There's parts of it exist.
Parts.
Yeah. It looks, from the aerial photo, it looks like about half of the portion of Pleasant Plains Road on the south side has sidewalks, not the entire length, to the degree that matters.
That's probably a fair estimate.
Going from page five of Carl's report, you kind of see the sidewalk.
I mean, I take Seal's point, because, you know, we're really obviously not asking you to be, make a contribution that is going to sidewalk all of Pleasant Plains. But you could do a contribution in lieu equivalent to your lot frontage, were you to be, were we to, were we to require you to put sidewalks in on your side of the street. Take that linear amount of frontage. What does a sidewalk cost? Contribute that, and that way, you know, you get a little bit, a little bit, a little bit. And the reason I would advocate here especially is because, you know, you're probably aware that the school district has purchased the lot further down on Clermont Road for a future school. So, you know, there is a likelihood that there would be, you know, children using Pleasant Plains Road, because it's much more, well, for lack of a better word, pleasant, to walk on that, I think, than on Clermont, which is a much busier road. You'd take care of at least that portion of it. Plus, you have access from 27. So there's multiple benefits to actually completing that sidewalk.
Your school is similar than your...
Well, that's, just helps me, helps make my case. Vince, Victor, Jim, I have no idea what the calculation for a sidewalk contribution equivalent to their linear frontage would actually amount to. However...
Whatever we're getting, whatever the bond, whatever they're using for the bonding numbers today to build sidewalk, you know, four-foot sidewalk, I don't know. What does it cost on a square foot? $3? $4?
I'm not doing the necessary...
No, no, I'm just saying, we just...
I'm just saying, if they agree in principle, then it's up to you.
If they agree, you could work that out. They could work out what was a fair amount.
Well, we see the county's figure of $19,000-some dollars for the Clermont avenue frontage.
For how long is that stretch?
So it would probably be about the same.
Oh, it's sidewalk's a sidewalk. How long is that? Do you know how long that is? That piece that they're talking about?
I would just estimate somewhere around 700 feet.
So 700 feet, $19,000. At $3 a running foot, it'd be $21,000. So like $2 a running foot, $2.5, something like that. I want to talk about that.
I don't know what...
That sounds too low. That sounds way too low.
Yeah. It is a lower figure, but I don't think that it would cost that much. I think the county was taking into considering, you know, curbs, sidewalk, and any expansion of pavement. There is existing curb out on Pleasant Plains. We're not looking to or needing to put any additional pavement. We'd just be particularly looking at sidewalk only.
I mean, we have bid numbers that we've taken in bids in the last year, and it would be, whatever those numbers are, whatever that linear foot for a sidewalk would be is what we would use. I mean, we have, we have the numbers. We've done it in the last year.
Can I ask you a question before we... I'm not clear what we're talking about. We're talking about a contribution to install sidewalk on the south side of Pleasant Plains to fill in the gaps? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. To complete the...
Okay. On the south side?
Yes.
Not on their frontage?
No.
My 700 feet is wrong, then. I'm sorry. I thought you were asking us to put it on our side.
No, I'm not asking you to put it on your side.
No, no. On the south side.
I'm asking you to contribute an amount equivalent to your frontage. Now, I don't know. There could be 2,000 feet worth more of sidewalk to complete on Pleasant Plains Road. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm saying, you've got 750 linear feet of frontage. Were we to make you put a sidewalk to nowhere on that, wouldn't make any sense. Better to use your money, equivalent to 750 feet of sidewalk, to complete some on the other side, where there actually is sidewalk to begin with. Makes sense to me anyways. So that's what I'm saying. I don't know how much total sidewalk there is.
Well, somebody would have to go out and measure it, and then say your contribution would be...
I'm not, I don't think it's fair to, unless they were going to develop the entire length of Pleasant Plains Road, it's fair to ding them for anything more than what they're actually, would be legally obligated to do for their own frontage.
That would be beyond your authority.
Yes.
Well, of course.
Yes.
Which is why I'm not asking.
But Chairman, are you talking about just filling in the gaps on the street, on the sidewalks across from our frontage? Or are you looking for the full 700 or what have you? Because I could see, if the theory is that the schoolchildren need paths or walking or whatever, it would be tantamount to a partial waiver. In essence, if during, if along the course of our frontage, which I guess would take care of our four schoolchildren or five schoolchildren or whoever comes out of our development, if that were, filling in the gaps were, I don't know, 300 or 400 feet?
I think what Mike is saying is that there's a certain amount of sidewalk that needs to be replaced across the street. And whatever that amount is, up to whatever, let's say there's 500 feet and you have 700, you got to pay for that 500 feet. You don't pay for any more than the 700 on your frontage. We don't know what the opposite, it may be 200, it may be 300, it may be 699, but it won't, am I correct?
Yeah, you're correct.
But you won't pay for any more than the 700, whatever is required to replace up the 700.
Just whatever is equivalent to their frontage. So again, we could theoretically, without a waiver, require them to install sidewalk over their entire, over your entire frontage. That sidewalk would connect to nothing for years and years to come, because other people are already in their houses, they're built, they're not going to need it. Rather than do that, I'm saying, you have 750 linear feet that you're responsible for. Like Vince said, the other side of the road may only need 500. It may need 2,000. I don't know. But I'm asking you for the lesser, whatever the number, either seven, whatever your linear frontage is, or the lesser.
Okay.
Well, you know, really, on the other side of the street, the goal in terms of the township would probably be to have that sidewalk go to Route 27. So if we're able to get 700 feet or wherever it is from this applicant, then that's what we should get. The town should apply it to the other side of the street and build the sidewalk, even if it goes beyond the frontage of their property. It doesn't matter. Our goal is to complete the sidewalk.
Frontage is just length.
The entire...
But I'm saying, we can only make them responsible for the equivalent of whatever...
700 feet. Let's not nitpick. Take the 700 feet and not worry about filling in gaps.
Take this from the other...
Wherever you want to put the 700 feet. You want to start it from 27, and it's your 700 feet, then it's 700. If 27 has something and you want to gap it somewhere else, it's up to the town.
Take their contribution and then build the sidewalk as far as it goes on the other side of the street.
Exactly.
We run out of money. Then get the next one.
Okay. So we, we don't have a problem with that?
I think that's fair.
Okay. Um...
We're all on the same...
What was it you were doing?
More or less.
Anything else from the board before we open to the public? Because it's pretty. Okay, let's make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's now open to the public for comment. If you have any comment, please come to the microphone, give your name, your address.
We're waiting to Mr. Laskin here. Turn the mic on.
Is it not on?
Frank, could you check that mic? It doesn't seem to be on.
I switched mics because we didn't have two.
Want to raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your names, please.
My name is Lila Pulis. I live in 40 Clermont Road, Franklin Park. 10 years ago, I bought the house. Nobody told me it's a wetland, and they don't let me do my driveway or drainage. I always have bismarck flooding, and the tree in the backyard, it's all broken and dead. I wanted to clean it. They won't allow me to do it. So if you allow them to buy, to build the house, why can't I do my driveway and the drainage from, to avoid the flooding and my bismarck?
My suggestion that you, this really doesn't have anything to do with this application. My suggestion is that you come in and see someone from our Township Engineering Department and ask that question. They can assist you in what you want to do. But that, what you want to do and what this application about are completely separate.
Isn't that a... Isn't that a wetland? Isn't a wetland?
I don't know if it is or it isn't, if what they're subdivising, subdividing is a wetlands and they have to deal with whatever regulations they have to deal with.
Actually, if you look on the map, the dark green, that's the areas of the site that have wetlands on them. And they've, what they're proposing is to stay out of the wetlands. And they're putting the homes, those are the brown boxes, and the darker boxes going down to the driveways, they're going to have the driveways going out to Pleasant Plains, and the homes kind of in the open field area that faces Pleasant Plains. And the wooded area in the back and on the corner, that's where the wetlands are, that's where, that's where the trees are. They're going to stay in the areas that are shown in that dark green. So, they're going to, in the open field area, that's where the homes would go.
Hi, I'm Jesse Waklowski, thirty-eight Clermont Road, Franklin Park.
Could you raise your right hand, please?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
It's okay. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. I live at thirty-eight Clermont. I'm concerned about the water. When Leila's house was built, we didn't know that there was a water issue. They built the house. We see the water coming, when, when they built the house, they built the basement, there was like six feet of water, they started pumping out the house. Then they, I called the township. I said, if they've got all this water, because it was woods next to us prior to that, they said, well, they'll put a swell in. And DEP comes by, says, puts a stop order on everything because it's all wetlands. Water is winning. My house, my yard, everything gets flooded now because the water, I should say, the house is raised up. It used to be the lowest point on the street, her, her, where her house is now. And because it's been raised up now, I get flooded. My concern is, where's that water going to go where those houses are going to be built? Am I going to get flooded more?
No, when, when this subdivision is perfected and they come in for their individual plot plans, each individual plot plan, you know, the plan for each individual house is reviewed by our engineering department.
That's what they did here.
And, and our engineering department makes sure that the water flows in accordance with all applicable regulations. So, though, that, that I can tell you is done because all those permits go through me to engineering.
Right, and they did, they swore to me ten, eleven years ago when her house was being built, that my house would be okay, that that water was going to be put with some sort of swell in between to protect us. And guess what? We get flooded, okay?
Well, that I can't, that I can't speak on...
But there's more houses. The water always winds.
Are you on the same side of the street?
We're right here.
Or are you on the opposite side?
The water winds, water.
Where are you?
Water always winds. We're okay. This, Mr., okay, we're right.
That's Clermont.
Yeah, we're in Clermont. So, we're...
Oh, okay.
Okay, this is where, somewhere in here.
That's right.
Yeah, right in, right, okay, I was just trying to figure out by looking at it.
Okay.
All right, so you've got these houses, you build up the houses like they built up Leila's house. They build everything up. The water goes down, the water goes down, the water ends up going to the lowest point. I'm going to be the lowest point again. Her house gets built up, I have all this water down. I had hurricane void, no water. Her house gets built, I've got water everywhere. Houses built, water, water, water. Where's it going to go? My yard? My pool is cracking, my shed's sinking, the water's coming to my house. I don't want, I want to know that, I want to be assured like they promised me before, that I wouldn't have a problem. I have a problem now, and it's not being resolved. I don't need more of a problem.
That's not fair.
Nobody wants a flooded shore.
Alls I can tell you is that there are, there are state and local regulations and county regulations that they have to follow, and they, they will have to follow those.
Well, something happened here, and it didn't get followed. And water winds, that's all I can tell you, is water is running over by us.
I assume the topography is such that the drainage off of your lots will go into the wetland area, correct?
That's true. Our lot is lower than Clermont Road. There are storm sewers on our side of the road that gathers water coming off of Mr. Carson's property. Clermont Road is built like any other, I'll say, county or township road with a crown in the middle of the road.
Curbs.
Which converts the water to either side. I don't ever see our water created on our lot, one, getting out of the storm sewer system that's in Clermont Road, or two, ever getting above the road and going across the road onto the other side.
There's a lot of underground water there, too. I was told by DEP.
Underground water? God, put that there.
Well, I can't tell you, I can't, I'll say, give any explanation on what has taken place on the two lots that are across the street through the development of their two homes.
My home is old, and hers is the new home.
Ma'am, is the property, right here, right here?
Sorry.
The property that you're talking about, that's on, that's your next door neighbor on, on the, on the same side of Clermont?
Yeah.
So, what this gentleman is explaining is there are a couple things different with this application. Number one, it's on the opposite side of the road.
Right.
And the road, if I can finish, and that the drainage from this property is going to go into the wetlands, and then the road somewhat acts like a dam because it's crowned, and then there are stormwater pipes in the road that gather that water from that side of the road.
And take it to a creek.
So, there are many different factors with this as opposed to the house that's built right next door to you on the same side of the street. That, that's what Mr. Doran was just explaining to you.
I wonder if water knows that, water, you know...
I think her point is that if building houses here adds to water that is going into groundwater, then groundwater can go underneath Clermont Road and wind up on her property. I'm not sure that there's anything we can do about it. We need to have better drainage into the storm sewers, particularly on your side of Clermont.
And Mr. Chase, if you...
Which is not this applicant's responsibility.
There are three culverts on our side of the road that the county had put in specifically to gather the water that is generated at our site and to be able to get into the county's storm sewer system when they improved Clermont Road.
Absolutely.
That's, I, I don't see our site contributing to water on the other side of Clermont.
I mean, really, what the bottom line is, whether it does or it doesn't, it, they're going to comply with every applicable state, local, and county regulation, and we're going to make them do that. We can't, we can't do any, we can't do any more than that. So, everything that we can do for you, we will make sure it's done.
And the other thing, too, just so you know, is that this, what they're seeking right here, they're not asking for anything more than what the law allows in terms...
They're raising it up, and the water's going to go somewhere, and it's going to find my yard.
Yeah.
And more so, that's what I'm concerned about. And because she can't do anything to remedy her house now, it's creating a major problem for me. I just don't want to see things get worse.
Yeah, and...
I have a real problem there.
And Vince and I, our, our staff for the township, will bring this to the attention of the Township Engineering Department, so when these things, when these houses do come in for plot plan review, they're aware of it.
He's actually, the Assistant Township Engineer is actually watching the meeting right now.
They should find my yard.
Believe it or not.
So, do you hear this, Carl?
Yeah, Carl's actually watching it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else?
Only Carl.
Want to raise your right hand, sir? Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name, sir?
Keith Stensland.
Address?
Ten Pleasant Plains Road, Franklin Park, oh eight eight two three.
Because that woman's compliant?
Well, we bounced around a lot in there, but I have a lot of history on Pleasant Plains Road. We moved in in about nineteen seventy-five and did a subdivision right across from Mr. Carson. He's been a good neighbor and an amazing neighbor, and I hate to see him go. We did our subdivision behind or across the street on the opposite side, where you're talking about where the sidewalk is. We were a couple houses more toward Route twenty-seven. And at the time, one of the stipulations was for us to put a sidewalk in. We had no curbs at the time, and we were going for variance because they're non-conforming lots. There are some odd-shaped lots across the way. We had the square footage, but just didn't have the frontage on the lots. One of the things I asked to do was to consider put the sidewalks in, but it was just impractical to put sidewalks in on two lots, then people would have to go against, at the time, we had a drainage ditch on Pleasant Plains Road, walk two houses down to catch the sidewalk going the other way. I wouldn't have minded if I was assured the town would finish the sidewalk, because I had children. I would much rather have them on a sidewalk than out on the street of Pleasant Plains The other problem we have is Pleasant Plains Road is a Lamaze course, not Lamaze, Lamans. It's a racetrack. So, on one hand, I hate to see people walking across the street because there's a bend there at Mr. Carson's property. On the other hand, I don't want necessarily sidewalks on both sides. When you get closer to Route twenty-seven, the frontages and some of them, the one at twenty-three, which I own, is about twenty feet. Ten Pleasant Plains Road is about fifteen feet off, and you'd basically, if you put a sidewalk in either one of those, they're going to be in your front yard, right on your porch. I don't know what the answer is. And widening twenty, Pleasant Plains Road is not the answer. To make it ultimately a cul-de-sac is something I think would alleviate a lot. I don't know which end you would do it. Obviously, I prefer to close off Route twenty-seven, and then that way, a sidewalk at that point becomes pretty much a mute point with only a handful of neighbors on that street. Putting sidewalks in front of Mr. Carson's property without extending them would be a waste of time and energy because we saw that across the way. I understand the need for it, the schooling. People do walk on that street, and it's dangerous. And I've gone to the town about possible speed bumps, but because of the, no actual straightaways, that makes it prohibitive. So, we need to deal with the cut-through at Pleasant Plains Road in addition to potential So, that's basically, and if you have any questions of me being there all these years, I have no objections to the subdivision. Obviously, I hope the homes are somewhat conforming to the neighborhood, even though we've got a mixed bag there. But it's a great neighborhood, but it's just, it's not safe as far as the street goes and Pleasant Plains Road. And I don't know what the answer is, but ever since that light went in, it's become a busy, busy, busy street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that on? Hello? Yeah, I, just one more thing I proved...
Could you just state your name again?
Oh, it's Jesse Waklowski again, thirty-eight Clermont. I think sidewalks is a really good idea over there, too, and they do need to do something with that street. It is very curvy. And since they put the light on Clermont, it's made it very crazy over there. I don't think that that was thought out too well. It's really posed a big problem for those who are trying to walk in the neighborhood. It's very difficult. So, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we proceed, Dan was, was checking out the, the length of the frontage, and we want to be clear on the record. And, go ahead, Dan.
The, the length that I...
Could you use the mic, please? Just so that it picks up.
The length that I had given you, that's seven hundred foot length, that's the average depth from the intersection of Pleasant Plains Road and Clermont over to the easterly property line. But in putting in the sidewalk, when you look at the, I'll say, from the easterly property line over to the portion where the, where the wetlands transition line comes in and where the beginning of the conservation easement would be, that distance there is about five hundred and seventy feet. So, I just wanted everybody to know what that distance was and that the applicant's agreeable to that.
And we have no objection to the in lieu payment, five hundred and seventy feet.
Okay, that's fine. So, all we can legally require is the sidewalk that you would have otherwise had to install on your portion in the pitch five seventy?
No, no. Well, I just, I just, I want to understand that it's, the five seventy is not along the entire frontage? It's from...
It's from the easterly property line, which is this property line here, over to where the conservation easement would begin.
So, it's not along the entire frontage?
Well, you, you have an additional, around that curve there, you, you have an additional frontage on Pleasant Plains Road.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just pointing out for the board's edification that the board can agree to that number, but they're entitled to have sidewalk on the entire frontage. You're just throwing out a number that you believe is appropriate, so...
Well, no, that...
Just due to the fact that you wouldn't be able to put a sidewalk through the transition area or the conservation easement.
I'm not saying that you could, but what I'm saying is that the board could require you and would have to grant the waiver for you not to. I'm just, I'm just...
Fine.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with your number, whether it's correct, or I'm just letting them know that it's not along the entire frontage, that's all.
Yeah, what we're trying to say...
They don't like you, Frank. See what happens? Don't speak anymore, see?
There you go. I think what Dan's trying to say, that even if the board imposed the sidewalk on the entire frontage, the sidewalk could not go in in that stretch area. Is that correct, Dan?
Yes.
So, the obligation, we believe, should be limited to what we would have put in if we were required to put it in.
Why would it go in the conservation easement portion? I'm just missing. Why would you take it right out to Pleasant Plains?
How is it an engineering question? I can't...
Well, no, no, I, I mean, Pleasant Plains outside Clermont, why wouldn't you go around the corner and just take it right out?
You, you have that wetlands line in the transition area for that wetland.
Oh, so you would be encroaching in there? Is that what you're telling me?
That's correct, yes.
So, you physically can't do it?
Correct.
Well, there's, the plot plan shows a, a right-of-way up some ways in, about that far. So, in principle, a sidewalk could be, I would think, could be constructed in the right-of-way there because that's already disturbed land when they redid the intersection of Pleasant Plains and Clermont.
Not to argue the point, but that's still in the transition area, even though that area has been disturbed.
Well, how could they disturb it to put it, to change that intersection, then? You're not the DEP.
And I'm not the individual who put that intersection in.
Well, the county did that, so...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with the five seventy. I mean, I'm not going to argue, it's five hundred and seventy feet that we normally get out of most applications.
All right, that concludes the applicant's presentation. We believe that we have basically a conforming subdivision in that we comply with each and every bulk standard. The variance we requested for the through lots, I think, have adequate justification
Normally get out of most applications.
All right, that concludes-
That concludes the applicant's presentation. We believe that we have basically a conforming subdivision, in that we comply with each and every bulk standard. The variance we requested for the through lots, I think, have adequate justification based on the testimony of Mr. Doran. And we've basically agreed to provide the in-loop payment as discussed on the record. So, on the basis of the- and we're going to comply with all the reports that we received. So, we respectfully request that the board grant this application preliminary and final subdivision approval with your standard conditions and the agreements placed on the record, together with the variance for the through lots. And I guess it's no longer a waiver, right?
Correct.
But except for Claremont, which the county's taking care of.
Okay. If there's any more board discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Victor, please.
In reference to the water runoff issues, is it possible we could tie the leaders into a drywell that ultimately goes into the storm sewer system, to prevent that much water going into the groundwater and raising the water table?
Through a drywall, that's exactly what you're doing, putting it into the groundwater.
Okay, how about could we redirect the water from the leaders into the storm system?
We- that's exactly what we have done on our grading plan, which is sheet four of the application. We have graded these individual lots, so that the water generated by the site flows in its existing direction. The drainage pattern has not changed as a result of the proposed improvements. But that water will flow into the wetlands and eventually flowing into the storm sewer system that's on our side of the road in Claremont.
Can we get the leaders, since the houses are closer to Pleasant Plains, get the roof- the leaders from the houses to go into the storm sewers that are on Pleasant Plains, pipe directly?
Hmm. What does that do to Pleasant Plains?
It's PVC pipe.
Are we talking putting them into the curb on Pleasant Plains?
Into the storm sewer. You said there are three inlets in front of the project.
On Claremont.
On Claremont. Are there any on Pleasant Plains?
I don't believe pipes-
Yes, there are.
I'm trying to take it out of the groundwater.
Well, I think pipe in Pleasant Plains is-
No, no, you just-
Well, they're draining into it now, so they better be able to handle it.
Yes.
Right, and you were going to have a sheet into it, so could we have a pipe into it?
Sorry, I haven't looked at that, to tell you the truth. The one thing that you're asking me to do is to- I would never say that you can't do it. We could certainly take a look at it. I'd ask you to keep in mind, though, too, that we have done a drainage study and report and submitted it with the application. It's been reviewed by your engineering department. It's been reviewed by the county and Somerset County Soil Conservation District. And all of them are in agreement that this is not categorized as a major stormwater development. It does not meet those criteria that would dictate us to have stormwater facilities on this property.
You know, I'm not asking for a retention pond or anything like that on a property. It's not that size. What I'm looking for is just to redirect some of the water that could possibly go right into the groundwater into the storm sewer system instead.
I mean, your roof leaders can't cross the wetland, obviously. And they can't go into the current culverts on Claremont. What Victor is saying, could those roof leaders from those four houses be directed into the storm sewer on Pleasant Plains? If you don't know the answer, we can simply leave it that, you know, you'll explore it, and if feasible, do it. I don't know if you agree to that language, but it wouldn't bind you to do it, because if it's not feasible, then it's not feasible.
Yeah. Me with our engineer determine whether it's feasible or not.
As long as it doesn't, I'll say, impact in a negative manner the grading of the site, because we had, I'll say, worked hard in configuring the lots, the location of the driveways, the location of the dwellings, in order for us to be able to grade these lots properly, so that they would maintain the existing drainage pattern of the site. And that is towards Claremont, as opposed to towards Pleasant Plains.
Okay. I think some language could be, and I think that's certainly a reasonable consideration, something along the lines of, you'll explore it with our engineer, and you'll do it if it results in a net benefit compared to the proposed plan.
Yeah, I don't-
Something along those. I mean, if you're going to completely, you know, if it's- if you're going to do it, and then all of a sudden, you're re-grading it, and now more water's going to go towards Claremont, you know, I would-
Then we don't do it.
You're not going to do it. But if you can do it, and in some way, there's a net benefit, and it's reasonable to your client, then-
Yeah, we're only talking the roof leaders, not the general grading of the site. So, it should be, as long as there's enough- I'm, of course, no engineer, and Jim jumped to breaking, but as long as there's enough-
Just put him into a drywall for grading.
It's going in the groundwater.
We don't want him in the drywall.
We're trying to answer that lady's question somewhat.
Ordinarily-
If I could just make another suggestion. In the engineer's report, he states that anybody looking to get a building permit is going to have to submit a plot plan for each of these individual lots. Could we put in the resolution that at that time is when that will be considered, the roof leaders being connected?
Yeah, that's perfect. That's when he would do it, yeah.
You know, as opposed to holding up the filing of a map or something of that nature.
Yeah, that's fine. That's when engineering would look at it anyway, so.
And one other comment on that.
I don't suggest that.
You might look at the plumbing code that we operate under, which, and don't quote me exactly, because I haven't read it in a few years, but basically says, if you have storm sewers available within some distance, I don't know the distance, you have to look at the code, that you will connect your storm leaders from your roofs to the storm system.
And that would be at the time of the-
And that would be nothing to do with site planning or engineering. It has to do with the building department. So, what I'm trying to say to you is that fits perfectly into your suggestion, that you deal with it at the time when you apply for each building, for each house.
And not affect the perfection of the site.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, then that's the way we'll agree. That's the way we word that.
Yeah, that was my thought, that that is really the time to deal with those matters. Ordinarily, we'd be happy to have the water be diverted into wetlands to percolate downward. Unfortunately, the ladies on the other side of the street feel that it will only increase the groundwater on their side of the street. And given that there's a problem over there, let's see if we can deal with it this way, but I think you're quite right. The time to do it is when the individual lots get the site plants.
Excellent. So, we were in the process of making- someone was in the process of making a motion, so if we can just incorporate that into it.
Go ahead.
Bob.
Who's doing it?
Bob made the motion. I'll second it.
Okay.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Court?
Yeah, I'm going to steal your copy.
Mr. Guyver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Chairman Ossini?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure presenting the first application of the new year before the newly constituted reorganized planning.
There you go. How often do you get it first like that?
Were you ready for office?
Okay, so-
He's waiting all bloody night to say that to us.
We have a five or 10-minute item, and I assume that the quicker we can get to it, the quicker we can adjourn.
It's Mr. Healy's.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Yep. This should be real quick. This is basically a follow-up of the discussion that we had a few months ago. If you recall, the planning board amended the master plan for the Trap Rock area. There was- and recommended an ordinance. That ordinance was introduced at council, and there was one question that was raised. If you recall, and I'll kind of go out and point on everybody's map, the one area that- where the headquarters or administrative offices are, that is currently zoned ROL, which is Research Office Lab. And if you recall, the plan was to change that to the M3 zone, which is the mining zone. And from the mining zone, we were going to get rid of- that whole area had zoning that permitted large-scale offices, warehouses, et cetera, not consistent with that area, not consistent with the infrastructure. So, the proposal was to change that area over in here, which is- that's where the administrative office building is, from ROL to M3. The concern that was raised before council, and I believe some council members were concerned that by changing it to M3, that that could allow some- the future mining of that area in the future. That's not the plan for Trap Rock, but nonetheless, by changing it to M3, the potential exists. So, we were asked- they basically asked the planning board to look at some alternative zoning. What I'm recommending in here, the proposal before you tonight, is to change that to RR5, which is Rural Residential, which is the zoning of the surrounding area. But then I'm recommending particular language, a paragraph there that's in that the outlined or the underlined paragraph on the next page, that basically describes the uses that are going on- going on the site right now. It's basically the administrative and support services that are going on right now for the quarry on that site, and that- and it specifically prohibits mining. So, it basically grandfathers in that existing use. I've shown this to representatives from Trap Rock. They are okay with the wording. I think it continues to allow that existing use in perpetuity, but at the same time eliminates the concern that at some point in the future, that land could be used, that the mining would move closer towards Route 27, which was a concern that was raised at the board, and I think is a concern of others in the area as well. So, presenting it to you tonight.
And would that change satisfy the council?
I don't know, but I would hope it would. It certainly eliminates the possibility our zoning would not allow that area to be mined, which is the current situation. So, it's not changing anything in terms of the mining, which doesn't allow future encroachment.